Alright, so we're gonna open the meetings. Okay, I've never opened a meeting before, but I will open the meeting. This is the committee to review town council rules and town code. We're meeting on June twenty fifth, twenty twenty four at five P M in the elections conference room of the town hall. This meeting is being recorded and will be rebroadcast on the town of Barstool's government access channel. In accordance with Massachusetts general laws, chapter thirty eight, section twenty. The chair asked if I whether anyone else is reporting this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. There is no one who has made their presence known. This meeting will be replayed via expedition channel eight for high definition channel ten seventy two. It may also be accessed via the government access channel live video on demand archives of town of Barstool's website. Okay, today our topics for discussion, the first is roll call.
Counselors, verdict.
Present.
Turkleson.
Present.
Lucky.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Clark. You have corn.
Hey, thank you. Alright, for public comment, that is our first topic after the roll call. Please utilize the Zoom link below or in person. Do we have anybody here for public comment?
Two of us are.
Okay, we see two people.
First, you did it first last time. I submitted a writing by comments from last time, so.
Oh, really? Nothing new to submit?
I always sit and say what I said last time, but I can't remember.
Okay. Okay, for the record, Larry Morton has stepped forward for public comments, and Attorney Nober has joined me.
I think that since what I said the last time, really followed what Bob said, I echo that. The thing I did say, Craig and I really got into the dialogue more was about the my roleiness and effort definitely to put together some documents concerning the town council rules and those changes to role of the, the role of charter. And then I also came up with the idea of putting some questions to get computer answered themselves to focus on that. And so that's all I really did at that time. What happened now? Craig did request that I, whatever I'm gonna submit going through Cindy and Cindy, I have Cindy, Cindy and I are marrying around. Whatever got to you, got to you. So I think you all have it.
Okay.
We're about to, gotta be, yes, and so it's all part of our statement.
Alright. And anybody on Zoom, is this on Zoom for public comment?
It is Council Actley, but there's nobody currently on Zoom. If there's anybody that comes on, I will certainly know in time you're letting off.
Okay. Alright, any responses to the public comment?
Well, you know, thank you for the work they both Bob and Larry have done for being here and joining in.
Yeah, absolutely. I remember the comment from Attorney Nober about, you know, some of the stuff, the bounds maybe within the charter territory, which is above and beyond this, but I think that's okay. If at the end of this exercise, we see that there maybe there is some need for that. And so I think that's good to do a comment as well. That would be why we're working.
Cindy, did we need mics?
I'm sorry?
Did we need mics? No, the microphone system doesn't work in here. The only microphone that's picking us up is currently the one that's up top of the whiteboard. So that's why you're all seated down there so that the mic can pick you up.
And the only other thing is, the documents that Larry just given, he sent to us.
He wanted to make sure you had the town council rules.
Got it.
And the admin code that you're looking at.
Thank you. Just making sure that I have that.
Yes.
So much to go back to.
And then the.
That's what he sent? Cause I was gonna ask, could I?
Yeah, that, that's all. Yeah, and then the attachment that you sent regarding your suggested edits were given to them as well, which is in their packet.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and that leads us to our next topic for discussion, which we discussed last time, that Attorney Nober would take us through our existing rules and the proposed edits, so we can have a basic frameworks to work from. So then we're gonna review with town attorney Nober, Karen Nober, the current town council, town council rules as written publicly on the town council webpage. And the public has full access, right? Something to all these rules, they can find these.
Yes, the town council rules as current, as they're written currently are on our town council webpage. The edits, no, they are not. They won't be on there until after this meeting.
Yeah, so we, they could see the edits that we look at today.
Yes, because they'll be included in the meeting minutes.
Okay, alright, very good. Well, we'll proceed with that if Attorney Nober is ready to.
Well, they would be listed in the meetings.
Is there an exception?
Correct.
You don't, yeah, you don't necessarily, unless you all want to share the document until maybe you guys have some decisions.
Right.
But that's up to you.
Right.
So.
This one is a junior square.
Yeah, this one's marked up, Larry. I just started highlighting it on my own.
Do you want me to just launch?
Yeah, why don't we go ahead? We're just jumping from the beginning and work on down.
Okay, so the one thing I will say is, I know, I think Counselor Turkleson, you distributed a bunch of ones from other towns, and thank you for that. I know Allison has taken a first shot at looking at that. I took a very quick look and decided I would just start with this and then. So this does not reflect anything that might be in another town's rules that we might want to incorporate in here, so this is just an initial take on, as I've been using the rules, I've been, you know, jotting things down, you know, noting things where I can clean up what's necessary and then went through it again. So, you know, none of this is carved in stone, these are my suggestions, and I'll walk through it. So the first paragraph, I think I was just trying to make clearer what happens. You know, the council isn't nominating a president and vice president, other counselors are nominating their fellow counselors, so I changed the wording there. So to me, these just clarifications, I thought it was weird to say nomination speeches, which is really by each candidate, because they're not nominating themselves, they're, they did nominate it, and now they're giving their speech as to why they should be selected. So that's all I did in that first paragraph.
Yeah, I'd like to bring that up because those of us who remember, there was quite a bit of contentious public comment on our first couple of meetings with downright outrage, that there was even thought that we might vote on this at the same meeting.
Correct.
And I think I would like to have a discussion here about that, because I don't see that in your edits.
Right.
It still seems a little bit oddly worded here. Would anyone, I, I think.
Let me just check whether, that may have come from the charter, which doesn't mean we couldn't make it more stringent.
Yeah, just wondering where that does come from, because again, there seemed to be a significant amount of objection, but then there was, well, if we'd only had one candidate, then we could vote, so. But it shouldn't be either or. I think it should be either based in the charter or in other, some sort of law.
Yeah, the charter doesn't address the timing of the vote, so we could say which shall take place at the next meeting as opposed to at or before. Because that's what people are objecting to.
Having it all at one meeting, because I think it's cleaner and it helps to take the business of the council forward when you have.
When you're not waiting.
Yeah.
What are you waiting for?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, to me, this is just a decision that you all get to make, like, it's not a legal issue. I think the reason for it is if someone's being nominated, it gives them time to think about what they wanna say in terms of presenting themselves as a candidate. I do think the public was reacting negatively to the idea of you all might vote at all at one, at the first meeting. I don't personally feel strongly about any of this, but that's why I didn't change it. And the way it reads is, it still keeps it as an option. It says at or before, where it just said honor.
But it made for a very clunky start, I thought, an awkward start. I think a lot of the constituents said that they needed a voice, but clearly that's not the intent of this, it's the counselors.
It's the counselors, but I think because there is a public comment component to every meeting, if you know who's being nominated as a member of the public, you might wanna get up and say something. And generally, I think this takes place usually at the end of the meeting, I'm trying to remember, but I thought it was at the end of the meeting.
To be at the end, and that's a curious thing, too. I would think it might be.
Yeah.
I mean, this is our chance to have this make sense. I'm just bringing it up because.
Yeah, I guess, you know, again, I think it's for you all to think about, but I think, I think it does make, in terms of sort of the whole transparency and letting the public know what's being considered and who is being nominated, it gives the nominee time to think about it, it gives the public time to think if they wanna get up and say something. But I don't think there's a right or wrong answer, so.
Well, then I think it should be clearly stated that it will happen at the next meeting and not this ambiguous thing like, oh, if only one person is nominated, so. You know, all the arguments you've put forth, there should still be an opportunity for publics comment, there should still be an opportunity for people to think.
Well, it's not meeting, we, we vote, where there was a vote to suspend the rules in order to do that. So absent that, you would automatically have to go to the next meeting. That was the unusual part, I think. Do you know what I mean?
Right.
As opposed to how would that traditionally be done? But usually, there's not a vote to suspend the rules to give it on the night.
Oh, well, because, but they have.
They have.
One candidate.
Right.
There was only one nomination, they suspended the rules and went ahead with the, with the election. To me, it doesn't make any sense to have that. We're taking office and, you know, the organizational meeting and then waiting two weeks for the organization to. I mean, even if you have two candidates running, you won't know for two weeks who's gonna be the president, who's, who's leading. Now, see, you have a lame duck president, but to me, it makes sense to do nominations and then do the election one after the other. I, I, I don't think I've ever been involved in any organization that has nominations and two weeks later has an election.
And I think if we made it clear that we're gonna do it, nominate and elect on the day, if people wanna come and make public comment, they're gonna show up at the meeting.
Knowing that.
Knowing that it's gonna be elected, they're gonna, you know, like, I'm coming into the meeting and, and I don't know who's gonna be nominated, but I'm ready to speak positively for Seth, and I'm showing up at the meeting.
Federal politics have a nomination period before the election. Every part, I mean, I feel like. I mean, I don't have to feel one way necessarily about it or the other, but, you know, the implication is that you would all, that everyone would know who's they're gonna vote for, and all the politics you would have gone on ahead of time rather than, you know what I mean? Which is typically the case. Right, so what's the difference, I suppose, but I, I, I think that the public notice aspect of it is something that is worth thinking about, just because people would, as you say, may wanna show up and say, I really wanna support Kristen Turkleson, so I'm going to that meeting, or I really don't wanna support Kristen Turkleson, so I'm gonna show up and say, listen, that's why you should not vote for her as president. Other, but absent that, there's no opportunity to, to, you could get up and just say, in case, public comment, in case you nominate Kristen Turkleson tonight, I'm gonna be very upset, you know, just in case, public statement. That's my way of thought, I mean, one way or the other, but some, it's just a form of notice and transparency.
I mean, it's kind of similar, and I know we'll get to this at some point, about the appointments committee, and the appointments are two reads, they're not measures, but they're two reads currently under the council rules. I suspect it's for similar reasons, it's to give the public notice of what the council intends to do, since appointments to committees are, are a big deal by definition, I think. So I can change it, I can flag it as something as a decision point to come back to, I don't, I can, you know, I can do it however you'd like to.
I mean, both sides certainly have arguments. If we're not gonna change it for the election to be on that night, I think it should be clear, someone said that we get rid of the honor before.
Exactly.
Or, and say, the election shall be at the next meeting.
Absolutely.
Because if you only have one nomination for president, the argument that you're making about it being transparent and the public having the choice of, the ability to comment, kind of goes out the window if you do it the same night, just because it's one candidate, if someone has some, some, some statement to make about that one candidate.
And you should be able to, I think, nominate at the second meeting if you do get, can't we do that with the appointments committee as well, from what I understand? At the second read, someone could say.
Nominate someone.
They nominate someone at that council meeting?
I have not seen that, and then again, the rules provide that.
Maybe it would be two reads, so you would have to suspend the rule.
I don't know that you can necessarily nominate at the second read. Because it's supposed to go through the appointments. You could just not vote on the nomination, like, you would need X amount of people to say, I want Betty Lucky to be on that committee, versus saying, I don't like Betty and I'm gonna nominate Craig for that committee. You can't nominate at.
Well, because the recommendations come through.
Yeah, the appointments committee, so it just would be, you don't nominate, you don't vote to put that person in the committee. Just like this would be, you don't vote, if Seth had been nominated, we don't vote for Seth. And I guess if I got down to a split council where we didn't, Seth didn't win and Craig didn't win, then we would go back to the drawing board, or.
Well, that's what it says here.
Yeah, I mean, you literally have to keel out, because you have to have a president and a vice president.
Sure.
Well, if we think it's important for transparency and for the other reasons, then they say, I, I wanna strike this honor before language and just say it'll be at two meetings.
So at the next.
Whatever.
At the next.
At the next regular meeting.
Okay.
Done, no discussion.
Do you guys agree with that?
Do you wanna remove anything about, is it, is there ever a reason why we can't suspend the rules? Or you always have to.
Well, if a rule, if a rule covers something, and you're not doing that, you have to suspend the rule, and the council has to approve the suspension of the rule. If the rule is also something that is reflected in the charter, because some of this comes from the charter, you can't suspend anything that's in the charter. It's like saying, you know, I'm changing the law, we can't do that. So anything that's in the charter can't be, can't be suspended, but if it's just in the rules, and I address this further on in here, if it's in the rules, you can suspend it. If it's something that's in an ordinance, that's not in the charter, you can suspend it, but the way that I have always recommended doing it is to suspend it using the same process that you would use to amend an ordinance. So you would have a public hearing, you would, you know, you would go through the same process to suspend, like, when we changed the start time of the council meetings.
Right.
That's something that was actually in a council ordinance, so we went through the same process. We didn't, I don't think we advertised it, because it's not really an ordinance change, but we had two, we had two reads and a public hearing for that reason.
So in this process, if we say it will be, it will be done, nominations will take place, and then the voting will be at the next regular meeting.
Yep.
On the first meeting when we're nominating, people could still suspend the rules and nominate Betty, vote for Betty, and then the public comment aspect that we're arguing for, making sure we have, would be lost if we suspend the rules. I guess I'm wondering, can we remove suspending the rules for this, for this section, or is that not allowed? Do you get my drift? Am I making this up?
You are. It's just a little circular, because if we put in the rules, this rule cannot be suspended, but it's a rule, so you could suspend it.
You know, it's not a rule, you're adding the rule.
It seems like an obvious rule.
I mean, it generally works out.
Yeah.
So. Okay, so I will make that additional edit. So rule, I mean, good, rule two.
Yeah.
Rule two.
And this is something I'd actually talked to Felicia about when the new ad hoc committee is now created, because under the rules, the president is an ex officio, a member of every council committee. My concern with the council president being a voting member is when we create the committees, we create them with an odd number of members, so that you can actually get stopped on. And then the council president is a member of every committee, but it doesn't mean she has the same interest in every committee, so she may only go to two or three of them, and then I think if she's a voting member, you now have an even number that you didn't know in advance, because how would you know which ones she's gonna care about? So I think, and she didn't, you know, I don't wanna speak for her, and she can certainly represent her own thoughts, but I had suggested to her with these ad hoc committees, that she play a non-voting role, and she was comfortable with that. So that's why I'm suggesting adding that language.
Yeah, can I ask something on this? It says the president may delegate that responsibility in whole or impart to any members of the council, subject to the approval of the council. Now, are we talking about the liaison positions as well?
I think we are.
Because we've never approved those by the council.
Is that right?
No.
They're true.
They've never been approved, except the president's.
Well, she suggested, I feel like it was.
No, we've never. I don't remember.
No, it's always been done, I know, because I was here before you guys, and I was just told by President Leveque, you'll be on this, you'll be on this.
And that may have been the practice.
And that was.
See, I, I don't think it's ever been a vote that I don't, Cindy, can you recall?
I think this is better, but it's not something we're doing now.
Typically, what happens is leadership sends an email to all of the councils, counselors, excuse me, to ask what your interest may be upon any of the boards, committees, or commissions, and then they take that into consideration when they start their assigning of who's on what committee for liaison.
The council never approves it.
No, no, yeah. Council leadership is always just.
Yeah.
Asked what you're interested in, and then appointed accordingly to their leadership hall.
Yeah.
But we've never had it as an item on the town council.
But it's, yeah, I know, we, we never have, right?
No.
And this goes back to the second dust-up we had about the ad hoc committees, where everyone was in a cure because President Penn was gonna appoint them. So it harkens back to that, so either we take that out, I think we are keeping, or we make sure we do it, but it seems a burden, I, I'm still comfortable, and I voted that way, that the president can assign.
So you wanna remove the subject line that says, subject to the approval of the council, and just leave it with the leadership.
I, I do, but I, I'm, I'm.
For make sure that Karen is aware of your suggestion, just so.
What about, what about the theme? Senate prior, the president may also be designated by the council to be its representative to all boards and commission. So that is currently not.
I don't think that's the case either.
No. No.
I, I don't even, I mean, she's.
Because if you, I, I believe if you read further down, it, it also says that you, well, you, being the vice president and the president are on all of the ad hoc as ex officios. But yeah, that's not, you know, that's not approved by.
Are we only saying the president serves as a member of all of them, and then we're saying that the council?
Well.
Is saying.
Well, when you say to all the boards and commissions, it's a broad statement. For example, there was a, I don't know if I wanna call it a board or a commission, to do the Kipco Commission Regional Transportation Plan. President Leveque was our representative to that. And I'm not sure how that appointment happened, and there's other things, I don't know if that's referring, is this a very.
That wasn't by the, that was not by the appointments committee, I believe that's a town manager.
Is that, see, that's what I'm saying, town manager does now. So I'm not, it's a very broad statement, I don't know what this, we ought to clean that up, if we're just talking about town of Barstool, because there are other things.
Yeah, what we're talking.
There's a lot of words in that paragraph that I think could be taken out.
President shall serve as a non-voting ex officio member of all council committees. President may also be designated by the council to be its representative, representative of all boards and commissions. President may delegate that responsibility in whole or impart to any member or members of the council, subject to the approval of the council. So the president, we were calling liaison.
Yes.
Now, technically, is a representative of the council. It, it does not say that you're a voting member.
No, you're not, you're not.
You're not.
You're not a voting member.
So why you.
And the liaison role, I think, is referenced. I actually was looking for it one day, it took forever before I found it, so I'm trying to remember where it actually was. But it was, it was embedded in, I think, maybe chapter thirty seven, the boards and committees, where it basically said. Sorry, where it basically said that the role is to, is, is, it's a reporting relationship with the committee. And then that way, the counselor as liaison can come back to the council and say, you know, here's what's going on at this committee, you all should notice. So that's really the role.
So that's why I'm asking, president may be also designated by the council to be its representative of all boards and commissions.
I would strike that sentence. Strike the entire sentence, because that's nothing. And then I would strike, because I don't know if we ever do that.
We do.
Yeah, I would strike the subject to the approval of the council for this next sentence.
Do you wanna say may delegate that responsibility to, well, we didn't say may delegate, because we just took out. Why don't we just say may designate members of the council as liaisons to committees, and then we can take out subject to the.
Committees.
All the councils.
Yeah.
Meetings.
Yeah, may designate counselors who serve as liaisons between the council.
No, that's good, Karen, that clarifies it, because it's, it's not clear.
For, and for its committees, commissions, everybody. commissions. Very. Okay. And the next sentence I don't need to say is.
Yeah.
That seems fine.
Okay, good. So the council president is the presiding officer. In the absence, vice president, in the absence of both, the clerk of the council, which is set forth in here further on, which is the town clerk, shall designate the council to serve as presiding officer and rotate increasingly, or that's what she typically does. That sounds, well, somebody has to decide.
Yeah.
And then I took out the rest of this. I didn't think it was necessary, and I believe it's in the charter.
What about the, I mean, Counselor's duties of the present act that
and actually.
She meets with the um, leadership, you know, chairs.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are more references to the role of the presiding officer in here or to the president. And I also feel like I wanna be careful about trying to capture every single thing that she or he may do, because there are certain things that you do as the president, and, you know, I, I don't want it to be, well, you didn't say it in the rules, so they can't possibly do it. Like, it can't capture every possible thing, but I think this is meant to cover the important roles that the presiding officer, the president, and they're not always the same. But they do.
Exactly.
Yeah. So we can go through, and then if you think there are things that are missing that need to be addressed, we can. Because there is something further on where.
There is.
Where, where the president sets the agenda and. But actually, I'm looking at this, when I say, I'm gonna put back in, no office of the council shall remain vacant. I'm trying to think why I took this out, in the event that the president no longer served. I think maybe just somewhere else in here. I have to double check, but I think I took it out because it showed up somewhere else.
We had that situation this year, when Vice President Coleman turned out, and, you know, we didn't have the two meetings.
Well. We go, as we go through it, if it looks like we don't find out, I can always come back and put that back in, but I thought the reason I took it out was because it was addressed elsewhere. Maybe wrong. Oh, here it is, in the event, yeah, it's rule thirteen, that the president and the council can no longer serve, the vice president shall assume the powers and duties of the vacancies, I have it all in the thirteen. Okay. Okay. Rule three, we good? Rule four. So the first sentence, we're not really calling the members to order, you're calling the meeting to order. So I'll change that. And this is procedural, stop them, the second powers are.
So does that mean that the, the president may speak points of order in preference to other members? I don't know what that means, in preference. The first sentence, the second, under rule four, I don't, I don't understand what that means, in preference to other members.
I think if the president gets, even if everybody else hasn't spoken.
The else hasn't spoken a vote.
Yeah, I'm sort of guessing now, but I think it's something's going on. Someone says point of order, you know, you so and so is not supposed to be doing whatever, and then I think the council president, like, that stops while the council president decides whether that's correct.
Is that the legal term for that? I just, I'm not sure.
I don't know. I would have to, I spend a lot of time looking things up in my question Mason's book. And I can double check on that, but that's, that's what I think it means, but I'll take another look. I think it's basically, you know, what you guys were all talking about stops while the council president makes a decision on what's been out of it.
And in the goal being that she or he would be preserving order and decorum in this process of superseding others.
Yes, it it.
In an effort to get.
Right, because you heard different councils say point of order, or, you know, and it's someone's basically saying the rules are not being followed in some manner, or, I mean, council president makes a ruling on that, and then if if the council doesn't agree, then it says, any member doubts. It shall be, shall the decision of the chair stand as the judgment of the council. So that's the motion someone would make if they don't agree with the decision. So the decision of the chair, the president, is not final. It can always be challenged by a vote of the council. And you start off with, you know, the president can figure this out. So that just talks about how you then challenge that. All those, any member doubts of a, the chairs can show the power of roll call. Now, the next sentence. It's a, no decisions should be declared. What originally said was unless a forum of the council shall have voted, that's not technically right. A forum has to be present. But if you have a forum, and then let's say you only have nine, that's a forum, and then one of those members abstains. That member still counts towards the forum. But when you're figuring out a majority present and voting, they're not considered to have voted. So you would do the math slightly differently. So if you had nine counselors, that's a forum. Two counselors abstaining, you're going to take a majority of the counselors present and voting, which is a majority of seven. So that's who actually voted, but the the counselor abstaining counts towards the forum. And I realized this one night when when you, someone had abstained because of the minutes, and it was like, oh, we don't have a forum. I'm like, actually, you do. Because you still count. If you are recusing yourself, you have a conflict of interest and you're refusing yourself, you don't count towards the forum. You're out of the room and you don't count.
Right, is that stated?
No, but those are, yeah, I do say recusals, I, yes, I added that. I said, extensions count toward the forum but are not considered votes, recusals do not count.
So if if someone, if we have only nine there, and someone recuses themselves because of a conflict, that takes you down to eight.
You don't have a forum.
You don't have a forum.
Correct.
Continue on that item.
Correct. Correct. And that's why we use the rule of necessity for the budget item, because we wouldn't have had a forum, and the council has to vote on that. And so there's not a thing that I, if we did. So that's why I did that. So, and then in the third paragraph, I don't know, I didn't make any changes to the next paragraph. I don't know if I. The next paragraph, I am asked by every president. You know, can I ask questions? Because they're not supposed to engage in debate. They're presiding over the meeting, and if they want to engage in debate on a particular matter, they're supposed to hand the gavel over to the vice president, or the vice president says, no, I want to engage in debate to another counselor to preside over that matter, and you hand it over for the entire discussion and vote on that matter. You're not, you're not presiding anymore because you want to be, you know, debating that matter. So, but I've always been asked, you know, can I ask a question? Can I explain my vote? And the answer to both of those things is yes. You can, you know, as you're casting your vote, you can give a brief explanation of why you voted the way you did. And you can ask questions, but then the presiding officer shouldn't ask questions and then say, and then start opining on the answers and start talking about it, because then that shifts into debate, but they can ask a question, get an answer. But they're presiding, they're not participating is the way to look at it, right?
Can they go in and out of that role?
I mean, they. No, not per, not per, they, once they hand over the gavel, it's for that item.
For that item, no taking it back. And then, but it sounds like you're going to hand it a third time. It sounds like.
What do you mean a third time? No, you hand it over if you want to engage in debate. If it's like, no, I want to be.
I know, but it says if the vice president, if if Craig, for example, chooses to debate, he gives it to somebody else.
Oh, that, okay, that's what you meant by.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if Craig says, well, no, don't give it to me, I want to engage in debate on this. Then it goes to, you know, the the town clerk knows how to do it. It goes to the next.
And what if that person wants to engage in debate? It just keeps going till somebody?
Going.
Okay.
And then I've never seen it happen.
Yeah.
But someone has to preside.
Yeah.
And whoever that is can't engage in debate.
I think we're previously.
I'm sorry, what?
Well, say, for example.
At that meeting.
Yeah. Felicia, the president has has the gavel. I engage in the debate, she wants to engage in the debate, she has the gavel with me. At that point, I can no longer engage in debate as long as I'm the presiding officer. If I have something further to say, I have to hand it off.
No, if you have something further to say, you're out of luck, because. Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, I just don't think it can just keep shifting around.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I mean, it's really, and I really haven't seen it happen very much, but it's just you're running the show, you're not part of the show. So, okay, so the next one, time and place of meetings, I just thought it would be helpful to just, you know, we're, what ordinance that is in this chapter two twenty.
Well, we have made changes.
So what you guys did is you suspended the provisions of that ordinance that say the meetings start at seven, and you took a vote to suspend that for six months while you all tried it out. And I have to check, but I think it's like somewhere in September, maybe, when the six months are out. So when we're getting closer to the six months, the question is going to be, do you want to make a real change to the ordinance? Or do you want to go back to seven o'clock? And then at that point, you all should either amend the ordinance or follow it.
But we've also changed two meetings. We changed one for the school vacation, and we changed another one just this month.
Right, so this, I think, really talks about the time and place, I think, is really more the seven o'clock and the meetings take place here. I also think, like, as a one-off, it's different from, that's why when we were making that change from seven to six, we still changed a couple of meetings to six o'clock, and I said to Felicia, you can change this meeting or maybe the next meeting, but then you really have to do this properly, you know, but like a one-off, I think you can certainly change something. Things come up and you can't like tie your hands and say nothing can help them. You know, at the end of the day, the rules are supposed to promote the efficient, you know, conduct of the meetings, and if you're like tied up in knots, then that's crazy.
Okay.
So, yeah, so at some point in the next few months, I think, you guys should just decide what you want to do about the start time and deal with that. And I think there's other stuff in here that talks about the dates, like the day of the week and rescheduling, and I tried to add a little more flexibility. When we get to that, they'll see that. So here, okay, so actually, regular meetings shall be held at a time and place fixed by ordinance, that's in the ordinance, but which will not be less frequent than once monthly. We're not having that problem. No regular meeting shall be scheduled on a solemn or legal holiday. I'm guessing that solemn. I don't know what it means either. So I tried to find it somewhere. I was not successful.
Yeah.
And I think that's my comment that I had in here, which is like, I I'm not sure what that means.
Well, I think it was, was it Yom Kippur or something?
No, it was Yom Kippur.
That the, she, she is what I would, keep a meeting or remove it, which.
And I'm guessing that's what this is meant to address. It's just, I honestly don't know. I don't know, I can't find it. So we can still look a little bit, but, or we can change it to religious or legal holiday. But then run into.
Which religion?
Right, exactly, exactly. So, you know. Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, yeah. I I didn't really know what to do with that, and I kind of tried to find a solemn somewhere and couldn't find it.
Do we have to take a vote to change the meetings as we did to to for Yom Kippur? Do we actually vote?
Change the calendar.
Yeah, so we voted as a council. Or we just, I I remember we talked about it, where were we? Were we on the dates?
Yeah. Did you, did you take a vote to change the meeting?
I think, I think.
Yeah.
The original calendar is voted on by the entire council when it's set.
Yeah.
And it's every other except for the July and August. And if that meeting falls on holidays and the council then looks at the calendar and says, well, we're going to change this one, you have to I have to repost that with the town clerk so that the public is aware, and when they saw it in advance, I think it was a couple of weeks after.
When they know in advance, they try to address it through the actual vote, but sometimes it's like, oh, my God, it's school vacation week, and it gets changed, and it gets changed by the council president, and I think that's within her, you know.
And then when there's a change and it's voted on by the council, I put that new change in the list, and then I repost that with the town clerk. She has to clock it in and post it.
I just didn't know if we needed to say here about no regular meeting shall be scheduled on a solemn or legal holiday is voted on by the town council, because that's kind of how we set up. The schedule was, we all hashed it out, and then we all voted for the changes, I thought, but.
I I I would not say that. I think you want to maintain flexibility because because things come up, and it's like, oh, I didn't realize that was, that holiday is occurring next week, and you know, we should change it. Yeah, yeah, like, this past week, it was Juneteenth, and we were sitting in the agenda review meeting, and it came up as a you know, is this a good day to have a council meeting when a lot of people are going to be taking off? So.
That also had a lot to do with the advertising too, of any items that came in for appropriation. I lost a day. If, and it was cramped, and we wouldn't have been able to hear them on July eighteenth because of the advertising that I'm held under. So that, that's why they said, let's push the twentieth to the twenty-seventh, so.
And and you guys make the number when you're setting the calendar to like take a look to see when sort of major religious holidays are.
Yes.
But it's not a perfect system, so. Because there's people involved. So the next one, special meetings, the rule said five, the charter says four. Cindy, I think you would flag that chapter two twenty of the town code says four, but most importantly, the charter says four, so it's four.
That's it.
Okay, so then I just updated the next paragraph, because it said the notice that's given to the members, so special meetings by written notice. Let me say, especially may be held on the call of the president by written notice. Said notice will include, and this is what goes to the town clerk and to the counselors. And I took out counselors' residence, because I assume everything's done electronically. And I just said, the notice, it's not, you know, it's the meeting agenda, and it's, it's everything that goes with the agenda. That's what I assume you want, yeah. So that's what I just changed there, and then added this solemn or legal holiday language. Yeah, that's where I was like, replace all with. Then, so the next sentence.
You don't think it's unnecessary when you say the notice will be delivered to each councilor, which is specified by email or.
Okay.
Not if you think it's necessary.
I don't feel strongly for it, if you guys do, I couldn't.
I like the ambiguity myself. Deliver.
I mean, the reality is everything's electronic, you know. I mean, I remember several jobs ago where people were literally racing around with huge things to people's houses. And obviously, that's not how we do it.
Well, I I just know, I'm actually thinking, you know, with what's coming up on the agenda with the town email and laptops and things like this, that we we ought to force ourselves into, you know, this century and the delivery. We hopefully will not be having these paper agendas in everybody's seat. I mean, not purely electronic, I would hope. And that's why I like the ambiguity in delivery. You know, email may not be the way, it may be delivered to some sort of portal or something. But that, that's why I like it. I think delivered, as long as it's delivered.
You won't be sending them back.
There you go.
I mean, the main thing is it has to get to all of.
Right.
And it has.
Yeah. But does it have to be delivered, or could there be a notification that it's available? That's what I'm saying.
Delivered is be an email.
Just an email that says, hey, check on the website, it's there, right?
Yeah, school committee doesn't use paper anymore. They all were assigned tablets.
Yeah.
And they pull up their agenda on a tablet, because it's sent electronically, it's no longer printed.
Right.
Oh, I got forty-three other boards, committees, and commissions who don't have laptop.
Don't take mine away. Yeah, so I don't know, I I think this, this does it, but. So the open meeting law, so before we get into this, well, actually, we'll start here, so this is just a fact. All meetings of the town council and all town council committees are subject to the state opening law. The rules had the wrong statutory site, so I corrected that. And I added the open meeting law regulations, because we're subject to those too. And then I took out on the next page, there's like all the purposes warranting executive session. Well, it's, it's true, but it's in the law. And rules, and every time I'm looking for something in the rules, I have to like wade through the pages of the law to get to the thing I'm actually looking for. And whether you have it in the rules or not, it's, it's a fact. Also. But also, like, if we go into executive session, we have already figured it out before the meeting. We know why we're going into executive session, we know which legitimate purpose we're, what we're citing. Like, we've worked all that out before the meeting, like, we're not sitting in a meeting trying to figure out why are we going into exact, so like, I just don't find it helpful, and it's the law and it's subject to it.
In the blue part about unless an emergency exception applies, did you add that?
I added that.
Specifically for the reason where something, like you said, could just come up.
Yeah, I mean, there could be something, and I actually I meant to just, I did that quickly because I didn't have time to go back and check the law, but I want to make sure there is that way. I think there is an emergency exception. Because things happen, and if you have to discuss something, I'm trying to think what it would be for exact, and usually the emergency is just to get is to add something to the agenda that wasn't within the forty-eight hour period. So I'm just trying to see if there is anything that would. I mean, I'll double check to make sure there is an emergency exemption for the posting. But I put that in there, because I was doing this quickly, and I I felt like there should be ones. I'll check it. Then, the procedural stuff I thought was helpful to have in here, because this is the way the law this is a procedural thing. It's the president makes the motion, it's the, it's the presiding officer makes the motion. They have to say whether the council is going to return to public session to let folks know whether to stick around. The vote to go in is a roll call vote, all votes in executive session are roll call votes. You have to go in for a reason that's set forth in the law. So I added, added all that, that we took out. So rule five B, okay, so this gets back to the meeting schedule. First, for Thursdays. So, I mean, this, this is what it says now, I just kind of edited it a little bit, but when you get closer to eleven o'clock, you're supposed to take a vote to go past eleven o'clock. Typically, what you guys have been doing is stopping in the middle of a sentence and taking that vote. You don't have to. You can finish the, if you're in the middle of an item, you can finish it. And then, if it's past eleven, you got to take a vote, or the meeting is going to end.
I was pleased to see that. I was under the impression of just what you described, which is very awkward.
It is awkward, and and I didn't change it, I just edited that sentence, but that's really what it always said.
I think that's good.
And to me, that makes sense.
Makes like more sense.
Why should you have? Why should you have to stop in a sentence to continue a vote? Um, so after you finish doing that, then if you want to continue, it's a two-thirds vote and I added. A lot of times a two-thirds vote is of the full council, but I made it of the council's president voting because if a council is not actually there. Not sure why we would care what they think about our council, it should be the councils who are present who you're counting. Yeah, makes sense, so it's not the full thirteen, if only ten of people there, it's two-thirds of the ten.
You know, one thing that seems that. Something that might merit some discussion here is, you know, we continually go after eleven, I mean, it's the norm. Which is exhausting, uh, and for none of us like it, the public despises it, rightfully so. Is there a point where we have to maybe talk about this? That or in the agenda setting part, that we really take a realistic look at these agendas and say. We just cannot jam this much into a meeting, it's not fair to anyone. And that we look at the opportunity, maybe have a third meeting that month? Or or something, I don't know the timeliness of things, it, to me, it is, you know. I I just, I don't think it's right, now that we're starting an hour earlier, we're still going down.
Believe me, I know.
It's not a a waiter to to do people's business.
I think the exception to that is during the budget, because you you gotta get stuff done within a timeframe. Um, and and it's worked pretty well, generally speaking, but the nights are long. I agree with you as to the rest of the meetings, because now we're starting at six, we're still going to eleven if not beyond. Um, you know, we've all worked all day. It's a lot, yeah, it's a lot, um. I don't know whether you need to address it in a rule or whether that's just something as a council you should talk about. And maybe it's a good time to talk about it in the context of deciding if you're making the six o'clock start time a permanent change. That might be a good segue into how long the public meetings you back out, you know. I don't, I don't know, I'm just.
And I don't think the answer is to stifle public comment or debate, I don't think that's the answer.
I would much rather meet more frequently.
I know. It does stifle debate.
When you think about everybody's not at their best at ten thirty, mine especially. You know, it's just, it doesn't do any justice to their language.
Well, especially, you know. And it says you're gonna meet the first and third, and I think maybe another sentence in here. That with the option for this on the second Thursday. When agendas dictate, I mean, something like that, I don't know what they said, but I don't think.
I I think the president has the option, first of all. Setting the agenda, we've got a rough idea of. Got the agenda meeting, say.
Let's stop doing this to ourselves.
Talk about that, we're talking with the full council probably better right here.
Well, and it's interesting because we've reported the town manager's report to take that out, right, to save time, but still provide that to everyone. And that was why it was done, it was, the meetings are going longer and longer. Um, you do a public comment, you can't change that, you can't shorten that, people have the right to get up and speak. And depending on what's going on, there may be a lot of people who want to speak and that throws off. You know, some of the planning, but that can't be helped. Um.
No, I know Cambridge, the city you're kind of Cambridge had a five-hour public comment because. People were so interested in a topic, it went five hours.
My first meeting on the job, my first week, I got home at like one thirty in the morning and my husband's like, where are you? You know, and I'm like, oh, meeting went on, you know, because people got up to speak on, there was a controversial issue.
But the school committee limits public comment, I know I'm not adding it, limit public comment to thirty minutes.
I I I just have a real problem.
The very easy way is to add capacity.
Yeah, you know, I think so too, I'd like to put that in.
It's more noisome to have to come here every week or is it more noisy that this is your.
But the problem is, if you have another meeting, what happens if we fill that meeting?
Not to mention, I just wanna say as a practical matter, like every time we have a meeting, there's a whole of review process that takes place of all the agenda items. And it's already kind of compressed right now, because like the minute a meeting ends, we're looking at the next agenda. And if we're adding even more meetings, like.
Yeah, like.
That's gonna be tough.
Be addressing the same amount of issues in the more meetings.
That's the case, I think you're actually creating more seats on the bus. Because we've added, we've added an hour and and I think that, I think like the theory Jeff was hoping is we'd be done.
But I think this council is taking a more comprehensive approach to certain aspects.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, the extra meeting will just be filled up with more stuff, so then we really don't.
Right, but so we have a certain amount of administrative items that are gonna appear. And relative to year over year, it's gonna be a similar amount of. Items that are gonna appear in that administrative capacity, whether it's the, you know, all the sort of things that we have to give. That's gonna remain fairly constant, then there's gonna, there's a bunch of stuff that will appear, it's discretionary, it's based on. What the the intent of like the current council, it's a philosophy of the presiding officer. And I don't see, yeah, maybe you'll throw up, but maybe you won't, you don't know unless you try. I'm sorry, this is something that sticks with me always because I really feel it's a service to the public, it's a service to the staff, it's a dis- it's a service to us. And it is not getting the best results because you know and I know that at the end of those meetings. You're not gonna get a robust and well-thought-out debate topic. And, you know, I put, I'm trying, I have a way to try pushing these along, that's my process. That I want to be able to have those discussions, it's appropriate for us to have those discussions, but. Find a way to do this in respect, that is all of our.
But even like the IT policy, when we talked about placing it on in November, he said, well, I said, like, not during the budget process. Because you're not gonna have time for this, let's wait until June when you can actually have a discussion.
So, I mean, being new to this, you've been here, you've been here, Cindy has been here. Um, as far as like the, like Seth is saying. We have hundred items that are always here over here, the same hundred items that we have to deal with. What is in your estimations, the things that are like taking us into longer meetings that maybe. Deserve debate or I I mean, I don't know what those things are that are are booking up our meetings.
I guess I'm not sure how to how to answer that.
I think it has to do with fact that, there's, like I said, there's a, it's a more. A a different approach or a more thoughtful approach, whatever we want to put it. And putting those things in and among all of the procedural things is creating a backlog.
Can you think of like?
Well, like, look at our special, our our all our information.
Okay, but above and beyond those, like in a regular meeting, not the special meetings.
You could say that some of the presentations that we received around budget time or maybe more than they need to be.
And actually, we scaled back this year, we changed how we did it this year, no, we changed how we did it this year and had Mark Millen. Present the budget as opposed to everyone could get up, that was intended to.
Is it because there's more debate, because there's more people at the commentary, is it because? Uh, the the defeat here, these.
Well, or if there's just more stuff going on in the meetings that deserves, has more things going on in the town, is it literally?
We had three hour public comment. You know, maybe there is nothing for it, but I don't know, I'm not the kind of person generally says, well, let's, I'm all out, we tried nothing.
Maybe we could do what we did with the with the six o'clock start. Um, try for a couple of months to do three meetings a month. Let's let's measure the the burden that it puts, let's let's measure the results.
I I I don't think you need to do that unless you have the number of articles that you would need. To do it forward, I mean, if there, if if things start to calm down. And and the meetings are less meaty. Uh, I mean, you can always schedule an additional meeting, I I I wouldn't like to see.
Oh, no, I don't want to see it in here, I said what what Karen had said earlier about what Felicia did. And now we're gonna codify the sixth, maybe that's the approach we take. Is we try doing the three meetings a month come September.
I wouldn't be in favor of putting it in there, you can always call a special meeting, if you have. A number of items that you're not getting to, there, well, we're gonna have a special meeting in two weeks and 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 we're gonna catch up.
Council on this one, the previous was exactly the same, routinely went past eleven.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't think that there'll be, I've tried to adjourn the meetings at eleven. And they always go on beyond, so is there ever gonna be the day where it's like, well, we didn't get to those five things, let's move to the next meeting, it's always, no, we're gonna finish something. Anyway, I don't mean to delay it anymore.
I think it's an important point though that, I mean, and this is our opportunity to to discuss it and other people can listen to what we're saying, so that maybe.
And it is an accounts, it it's an ordinance to, regular meetings of our school town council shall be held on two Thursdays per month. Except during July and August, when regular meetings shall be held on one Thursday per month.
That's in the charter?
That's in the town code. So it's an ordinance. You can change the ordinance, you would amend the ordinance. My personal opinion, it's just my personal opinion, um, I don't like the idea of three meetings a month. Because it's it's a lot, like, we've been adding special meetings and they're not even like meetings with like agendas and votes, a lot. It's a lot, um, you know, when we have to add a special meeting, that's fine, but uh. I think we should think about ways to make the meetings more efficient, you know. I don't have a great answer.
Oh, so do you have an idea of the top of your head?
I I would have to give that some thought and and we would have to talk, obviously, with you and Felicia. And I think that's a conversation worth having, because they are long, they're starting at six and they're going long. Um, and yeah, I think the budget meetings are their own special animal, but the rest of the year.
You you mentioned the town manager's report. We can just reference the town manager's report, we don't have to ask the town manager to get up and give it, because it's it's on video already. It's in print as well, and say, you know, just acknowledge that the town manager's report is available, anyone would like to see it.
Is that in the code that ha- that has to be presented at the meeting?
It is, well, it's definitely in the rules, um, I would have to look to see. Whether it's in the code.
I mean, that's applied to every council.
Yeah, it's been supplied to every counselor and, I mean, I think. And I'm not even sure if we're exactly doing it like this, but I think the way we had talked about doing it was, Mark would record it. It would be available to everybody, when we got to that point on the agenda. Uh, the council president would say, here are the topics that were covered. So that people would know and especially the public would know in case they didn't watch it, they might wanna go and watch it if they knew he was talking about something. And then the counselors then have the ability to ask Mark questions. Because presumably they watched the report and they may wanna ask him something about what he said. So I think that's why we were kind of doing it that way, which is recorded, posted, to just rattle off what he talked about, but.
But I don't think it's necessary, they can just come up and give a summary or talk about it. If someone has a specific comment about a question about a specific area, great. But not to have him come up and.
But not recently.
I I I thought he was coming up because.
I think he's been better about that.
No, I think the whole point was for him not to present it unless a counselor wanted to ask him something. And, you know, counselor's house, which is fun, you know, that's what you do. Yeah, I'd have to check, I know that, I know there's a listing in the rules with the order of business. I don't know if it's an ordinance, I don't believe it's in the charter, um, but I have to. I'm just seeing. I don't think so.
I can't find it in.
Yeah, I mean, I can take a look, but um. It's definitely in the existing rules that there is a town that you can report, I mean, I think you would want that in some form.
Yes.
You know. And I think the way we're doing it makes sense, like it was an attempt to bring it out of the agenda and save some time. Okay, um, so I think we're still on regular meeting schedule. So, so it's two-thirds vote of the council's president in voting, so that's a high bar. And I left it as two-thirds, um, to go past eleven, then. If a meeting, regular meeting date falls on a solemn or legal holiday. It originally said the president shall reschedule such meeting to the Thursday of the following week. I changed it to shall make every effort to do that, but may choose another day if warranted by the circumstances. So that she's got some flexibility if it's a real reason not to have it the following Thursday. And then, and left the rest of that. The next one, introduction of council business, so. Anything that makes it onto the agenda has to be, um, sponsored by a counselor, the town manager. Or by petition as provided by the town charter, with general laws upon. And actually, I wanna take a look at the general laws part of this, it definitely should be or by petition as provided by the town charter. I know zoning amendments can be initiated by a petition. Of a resident, um, but I think we still, when we place it on the agenda, we still have a counselor sponsor that. We don't, so I may, I may wanna take another look at whether we include.
Yeah, the just part, I remember, um. Regulatory agreements coming forward, but a counselor had to sponsor it.
Well, and that's not a, and that's, that's a contract, that's not actually a zoning, but the zoning is under state law. There's a process by which someone can petition for a zoning change. So we'll take another look at the general laws piece of this. Um, and sort of what our practice has been. Because I think what we've typically done is say, look, you're gonna have to put this on the agenda, somebody needs to sponsor it. So, okay, this is just what goes with. So the definitions of measure and non-measure, I just made a few edits to, um. Use the language of the charter, which is where this is defined. For contract approvals. Actually, the way we have the rules, the way the rules were written, it had contract approvals as non-measures. It's actually a measure under the charter, but not all contracts require council approval. Most contracts go through the town manager, so the way I have always applied this is. If there is a law that requires council approval, and there are laws that require council approval of certain contracts. That is a measure and that needs to go before the council and be treated two reads. I think in the past, certain contracts that were brought to the council were done as one read. I think it should be two reads, so we're doing just two reads, I'm I'm treating them as men. I'm treating them as measures, um, because I think if it has to get council approval. If that's not a measure, then I don't know what kind of contract it is. Um, there are other contracts which may not technically require council approval, but they're of such a significant nature. That we would bring them to the council and then I would consider that.
So it was not found in the codes and you are the decider. If something is a measure or not.
Well, and actually, um, let me just go back to this for a minute. Yeah, I mean. It's not. The measure definition just says contract. And so. You know, I have to interpret it, right? If 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 there's a question, it comes to legal and it's what's the answer to that, so generally, I try to take a conservative approach. Um, but, you know, yeah. So, yeah, I think in general, contracts that are required by law, like. Like an intergovernmental agreement that requires, um, like for the the. The rec, the regional emergency communication center that that you all heard. We did that as two reads because that is required by law, intergovernmental agreements must get council approval, so. That's how we do. Now. So measures required two readings, that's under the charter. Um, non-masures. This language comes from from the definition that's set forth in the charter.
And non-masures, um, there's nothing stated here about how many reads are required.
Um, no, because it's, the default is one read, but it's two for measures.
Okay, because I find those.
So appointments are two reads because the rules say that. That's not a charter requirement. That's why you're able to suspend that rule sometimes and do it all in one vote. So that's what I was saying earlier, is that's something you all have decided. As a rule for the council, that appointment's a two. That's not. And in fact, um, appointments are non-masures.
Yeah, that's why I was.
Yeah.
Like, why doesn't it fall under measures that we're doing?
Because it was specifically addressed. Um, um.
So the next one, you're not sure of the days.
So, oh, so I guess I wanna think about like what this paragraph is meant to cover because there's an internal process. Um, but obviously, anything that gets onto the agenda. Has to go through the agenda review process and ultimately the council president decides what gets placed on the agenda. Um, internally, we had a schedule um where staff needed to get all their agenda items. To me and to Mark Millen by a certain date so that he and I couldn't review everything, make whatever changes we were making. And then provide them to Cindy um for inclusion on the agenda and then giving that. And in that mix would be, you know, the council president and the vice president and everyone would see it and make a decision that it would go on the agenda. So I just need to think about. I don't even know what the process is anymore because agenda items are flying in every five minutes. So, so when I thought about this, I'm like, I don't know what the deadlines are, so.
Well, that could be, that could help in terms of what our previous discussion, keeping these agendas more in line.
But that's why adding a third meeting just makes my head explode because. You have lead time and now that we're posting meetings even earlier than what we're required to do. It just compresses all the time periods.
But I would think you'd give yourself perhaps the same seven days. Um. And that, I don't know, I would propose you give yourself and then, you know, make this a more burdensome process. I mean, I have to say it that way, but that might slow it down and get it to a cadence that's gonna be more realistic. I mean, what are we doing that has to be done at the speed of light?
I love the game.
Nothing. Well, she says they're flying in, but I'm saying, but it doesn't. I'm not saying. I'm no, that's what I'm saying, that that we should be slowing it down, you know, on purpose. That we have a more responsive system. But we also don't wanna hamstring the people who have to deal with the reality of so. Well, again, what? Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm just saying.
You know, even even before we changed the posting deadline, we we had actually, and I had spent time putting together like literally a protocol. Where you will get this to me by this date and this no, and I was asked to put that together and we did that. Um, but then there's always something where someone's like, this needs to get on this agenda, it's really important. And if I'm told that and, you know, if Mark or Andy say, yeah, like, then yeah. Go review it and we fix it. You know. So I have to review everything, Mark Millen has to review everything.
Well, that would be suspending the rules. I just think in the rules, we should have the protocol.
But I guess, I I guess the reason I'm hesitating is the rules are really the town council rules, they're not the staff rules. And so, you know, it may be that this shouldn't even be.
I was gonna say, maybe this shouldn't even, this government.
I was gonna say the same thing. I think you're you're getting into process too much as opposed to rules of the council.
But I'm also, but I don't think, well, shall be submitted in writing to the administrative assistant, that's Cindy. No later than, I guess maybe we could just keep it at that and take everything else out. Because she just needs to get it in time where she can post it. Right?
Well, but it also typically has to go in the agenda meeting.
Yeah.
The when, the prior to the Friday.
Right.
So that would be ten days. Prior to the.
Right, then you gotta count back if there's appropriation in transfer orders that are public hearing or any public hearing. I need forty-eight hours to post that to the public. In an advertisement, that goes out before the agenda's posted. So management would have to count back if there's submitting an appropriation.
Right, they all have to get advertised.
See, once again, we're getting a process as opposed to a a rule and.
Although it it's nice to have in the rules so people know how something gets into a meeting. And where else are you gonna put that?
But that would know, that knows the process.
Yeah.
It doesn't need, you don't need to spell it out in the rule because. You know, the fact that that we even changed from a agenda posting on Tuesday to agenda posting on Friday. I mean, that mean you have to really change the rule again. I think those are nuts and bolts things, they really don't have to be in the rule.
Well, we could write the rule in a way that says X number of days before the date on which the council president has decided to post. You know, post the agenda, keeping in mind that, you know, it can't be sooner than putting it out.
Is this written anywhere else?
Is what written?
How you get something on an agenda, the timing, is it anywhere else on any other?
I don't think so.
But it has to be accounted for somewhere.
But I do think we should separate out, like what I had put in was sort of the internal me and Mark Millen process, which I don't think should be in here. I think if it's, these are the town council rules, it's what needs to get either to agenda review or what needs to get to Cindy and when. Um, but the reality is like every everybody knows, like.
Yeah, how it gets there and the process isn't so important. It's the fact that it meets the rule, which is the important part, it gets. To the agenda setting and it gets to Cindy.
Well, I mean, the reality is it's not, it it's not gonna get posted on an agenda, it doesn't.
Right, that that's kind of what I'm saying.
Yeah.
It has to meet certain requirements of the law that's probably noted. How to get there.
Is is really.
Not, not if you're relevant to the council.
Yeah. Why don't you just leave out this first part and do the second, the part on the second page and that could be it. Starting with the council president. The council president at the consultation with the sponsoring counselor and town manager should perform replacement of business. On the council meeting agenda or other appropriate disposition that does the same forty-eight hours we saw earlier. It just matter of fact to do it. I think just, I think, yeah, you're right, we're getting too far down in there. If people agree with that, just the second part of that. But we just, where did we have the forty-eight hours before? Didn't we already say that? The delivery?
Well, we noticed a special.
That was a, um.
You noticed special, actually.
There was a special made though. I mean, we're actually doing it.
Highly.
You know, more than forty-eight hours, but that's the legal standard, which is why if we're amending agendas, we can easily do it between a Friday and a Tuesday.
Because that gets to, if these are the town council rules, we start with town council president. Yeah, the rest is just. The other stuff is the internal staff and it is coming about, so. I don't know if people agree to that.
Not sure.
So then we should change the heading because it's not filing deadlines.
No, it's agendas, something that I was setting.
Agenda.
Agenda setting. Now, the agenda setting media is that open to the public?
No. It's an internal meeting. Um, so, okay, so we're starting with, I'm taking out everyone here, we're starting with the council president. Right, cause when you were asking like what what are some of the duties or roles of the presiding officer, the council president, not the side office.
Yeah.
It's just that the agenda.
Yeah, so this is good. He plays it up.
Okay. And I changed in consultation after consultation because it's the president's decision at the end of the. I think that's who. I rule five the. Business. So this is, so. I don't believe this is reflected elsewhere, but this order of business was in the existing rules. And I just added language that says, yeah, you know, this is how we're listing it on the agenda, but as we know, um. The council president um moved stuff around, you know, when there are reasons to do that, so I wanted to just make it clear that that can help.
Yeah, I think that's good because that comes up quite frequently and that's something a nice thing to happen.
Right, but we're still listing it on the agenda, you know, basically, just right. Yeah.
Do we need all the sites?
I don't think we do. I was leaving a minute for now, but whatever we end up doing. Is going to replace all of this, you know, when the council votes on whatever it is you all recommend. So, yeah. So, so public comments. Um. I made a few edits to this, but I feel like, like even if you read the beginning, that's just not how we do it.
No, great.
So I think we should figure out how do we wanna do it and then the rules can say that.
We just started the uh. Any person, each person. Each person wishing to uh participate in public comment shall be recognized by the chairs with clean bar bar work.
Yeah, I think that's, so you would leave the first sentence, so at each regular meeting, there should be a period set aside for public.
Yes, I like that.
Get rid of the next sentence, that any member desiring, they need to get in touch with Cindy, get her that on.
Yeah.
You could, um, any member of the public desiring to address the council may do so.
Right?
But we've also added a link onto the, I I get a lot of public comment through email.
Yeah.
Before the agenda.
Yes.
And those comments get forwarded to the counselor if it's for their precinct and the town clerk also receives them. I don't. You know, I don't know if you necessarily wanna eliminate that.
No, I don't wanna eliminate that. I think that's a nice feature.
When you say it just goes to each counselor in their precincts, if someone makes a public comment.
It goes to all thirteen councils.
Yes.
Right. But a a hard copy is put in your mailbox just so that if you wanna comment that night because it's your constituent. That Joe Smith sent this comment in on the agenda, you can do so. That's why the council gets a hard copy. But all thirteen receive a public comment, I would do, yes.
So that's.
I just guess I mean, well, preserving a place on the agenda.
Yeah, that's.
That, yeah, cause.
Yeah, so the way it would read now is at each regular meeting of the council, there should be a period set aside for public comment. Any member of the public who wishes to participate in public public comment shall be recognized by the chair and shall state because of their name. And then I added this language because I'm very uncomfortable with people being, and we don't do it really anymore, being asked to state their address. Um, I I think there are all kinds of reasons why that's not.
No, that's not good, that's good.
Right, so I just said if they're a resident of Barnstable, they can state the village in which they reside. If they're not a resident, they should just say what town they live in. I don't, I don't think anyone should get their address. When I first started, people were getting up and stating their actual address all the time and I.
No, that's not.
So, yes, that's why I changed that. Um, and I can change it further if you want.
Well, we should take that, otherwise there's a problem because we do that person.
Yeah.
That's just saying if they had.
Yeah.
Yeah, like if they hadn't signed up.
Correct, yeah. Yeah. That's good.
Do we pick up with the most part? Public comment will be limited to three minutes.
Um.
Three teams.
Yeah, I would say, I would say generally, public comment because it's time allowed, it's at the discretion of the chair.
Yes.
But we start with the premise that it's three minutes and then you may let somebody go longer, but we're not gonna say you only get two.
Yeah, that that's what you get, you know, you can speak for three, but you can speak for twenty.
Yes, I'm just gonna say generally. Public comment will be limited um to three minutes. But really, it's, it could be more.
I I I would not be in favor of permission of the presiding officer that the uh.
So.
Enter into discussion directly. I I don't think that's. Public comment, I don't want to get into bait and bait.
Well, correct, um, I agree. We have had meetings though where someone has gotten up and. Um, a counselor wanted to respond directly to what they were saying. Cause generally they're not, this is when I got up to give sort of the framework of public comment. I remember when I was sort of reminding everybody, you know, how we were doing it. Um, but there there were times where someone would say something and a counselor wanted to respond directly to what was being said. And so I think if if the president allows that, and I think it's up to her. Um, there could be a little bit of a back and forth if everyone thinks that's that's helpful. Um, but it's with the permission of the presiding officer. And um, I think the default should be the public speaks, they say what they want. The council responds in response to public comment. But I do remember looking at this language and I think it was written weirdly, so I just basically said in my comments. If there's gonna be any direct conversation, it has to be with the permission of the chair. And in fact, the chair was doing some of that too, you know, so, you know, I was like, everybody like. Step back, let let the residents talk, let the public talk, and then let the counselors talk. But, you know, it, the chair is presiding over the meeting, so it's with that permission. And what we can, yeah, I mean, it's up to you guys, that's that's why I.
Yeah, yeah, I I kind of agree on this. I think that could get very awkward. I mean, I'm probably the most, the person who responds to public comment. I I like that. I think it's important to recognize that people took the time to speak. But I don't know if it's a place for dialogue. I think you recognize them, you understand their issue and then further action is done after. The meeting, which is what, how I normally handle it, but I think it's important to recognize. I think the dialogue at the meeting.
That's fine.
But I have seen times where a counselor will respond to what someone said. And then maybe wanna ask them a question and that's been allowed where they'll say, well, you know, whatever it is. They'll ask something and that person who had spoken in public comment would respond.
I've never seen that because I know that's.
Cindy, you've seen that, haven't you seen that?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry, I'll say again.
Where where someone will say something in public comment and then when a counselor responds, even if it's after public comment. They may say something directly to that person and that person sometimes will respond.
Yeah, I I've seen them.
You know, is it a great practice? No, I don't think it is, but on the other hand, you know.
Well, also contradicts the sentence right before saying that. I, uh, all remarks and questions shall address the council a whole.
Yeah, right, and that was the other thing we were reminding folks, which is like, don't talk directly to counselors, you're talking to the council as a body and it's through the chair. Um, but in more benign situations, there have been some sort of back and forth that. You know, was more clarifying than like, you know, craziness.
So you're saying after, um, let's just say Seth comes and makes public comment. Public comment's over and then Felicia would say, um, does anyone have comment? Betty would say, you know, I have a question for Seth. And then they would have a dialogue in the response to public comment? Or are you talking about a dialogue during when he's making this?
I think it could be either either way, you know, it's, again, it's. The presiding officer is running the meeting and so the basic rules are the public has to speak, the counselors speak. And if you're gonna deviate from that, it should be with the permission of the presiding officer, like. Counselors shouldn't just be going, and I want to talk about, you know, like that's.
No, it just seems murky and quirky the way.
Yeah.
Now, when now regardless of what these rules say, doesn't the presiding officer have the right to leave their meeting anyway?
She does.
So what?
I would take all of it out. I think it's confusing the best.
And based on that, and I would say, you know. Comment, now, why have for the most part, public comment shall be limited to three minutes. I mean, if we're gonna write rules that she has the right, or whomever is in that position has the right to change at any rate during the meeting. Shall be limited to, and then you might as well, why create rules that are that are binding?
I like generally only because there have been times where the presiding officer has let someone. Take a little extra time to finish a complex thought or something where it's not like. You you know, you don't say three minutes and you cut them off mid-sentence, like, you know.
I don't think.
Well, but I thi- I think it's generally, it's three minutes and maybe what we should say, you know. You know, a small amount of additional time may be a. You know, a small amount of additional time may be allowed at the discretion of the chair because it's just, you're, you're not shortening anyone's time.
Right. But she has the discretion to, 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 to operate outside the work sheet, I said she, but the chair has the. Right to operate outside the rules at any rate, so when you make them more stringent and then allow the person.
Well, she doesn't really have the, have the authority to operate outside the rules. I mean, if it's a town council rule, it's a rule. And so that's why I was saying I don't want to cover every authority of the chair. Because there are things where, but if you say like it can only be X, then that is the rule. And now, now she would need a suspension of the rules to let somebody go beyond three minutes.
Well, what if you put the sentences in different order?
Yeah.
Public comment will be limited to three minutes for each individual speaking period. Time allowed for a public comment will be at the discretion of the chair.
I would say generally, public comment will be limited to three minutes. For each individual speaking. But. Additional time may be granted at the dis- at the discretion of the chair.
I know how this, this has been done in practice, um, people have gone. You know, a couple of days in advance in the meeting and requested, uh, like ten minutes to the president if they're, they're. That's, that has happened.
Oh, really?
That has happened.
Yes.
Before us, you mean?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm saying it hasn't happened since we've been.
No, it hasn't, but before.
And it, and it was granted?
Yep.
Do you remember what the topic was?
Uh, Twin Brooks was one of them. And I think there were some others, but I know Twin Brooks was granted ten minutes.
Yeah, at the discretion of the chair.
I don't, yeah.
Yeah.
I like the discretion only because I don't like rules that say like. This is how it has to be because there will be deviation and then it's, I don't want to get into a whole thing about, well, you didn't follow the rules. The chair has discretion, you should run the meeting.
Yeah.
Someone is talking and it takes them three and a half minutes and she wants to let them finish that. Uh, you know.
Yeah, we, I mean, we really don't cut everybody off. At three minutes, they say, you know, you've reached your three minutes, I.
But that's why.
Four minutes.
But that's why I think generally, public comment will be limited to three minutes, I think, is. That's, that's the starting point. That's what we're doing and within reason. There'll be little adjustments made because nobody can speak in perfect three minutes of sound bites. Because who can?
Yeah, no, and I, I would get rid of all the rest of that stuff because it's just too much. It's too complicated. I don't think it. I don't think we want to encourage that. I don't think that's the point. Well, we want to keep the, all remarks and questions shall be addressed to the council as a whole through the chair.
Everything after that, except for the last sentence which stays in.
Yeah.
Um, should I leave in, no other persons may speak during public comment unless invited to do so.
And then if any person persists, we're keeping that.
Yeah, that's in the open meeting law, that's.
Um, yeah. Well, do we need that if it's already in the open meeting law?
I think it's helpful. I think it's helpful.
Okay.
And it's also, it, it just reminds the chair that there is a process by which to remove people if it gets to that point, which hopefully it doesn't. So I left rule six alone.
Except for a little typo.
Oh.
In between clarity.
Yeah, I dropped the, uh.
Yeah, has anybody? Mason's manual is about this that.
There it is, I write. So you're reading and doing it.
Not the Bible, I got those next to my bed.
Well, you know, every time I learn something new, we've got. You know, every time I'm asked a question, um. So, yeah, it's, you know. It's immense. Except for solemn holidays, which I. Yeah, I don't know why it said eight with the number nine, but it's nine. I don't know, six B order of speaking length of.
I don't understand that unless voted otherwise. Is that accurate?
Where are you?
Well.
Well, you said a council should be limited to three minutes unless otherwise voted. We're gonna stop and have a vote. I remember when Seth. As a counselor pro to stop.
So there would have been a point of order and then it would.
Yeah, I mean, I think, right, I think. It's, yeah, it's a little weird in here, but I, I think the unless otherwise voted. Generally.
We could have voted him down. He said rule six be a run rather correctly.
Well, she, Felicia could have said she, well, she accepted that as a source order. She. You guys could have said, does that stand as the. Counselor, the right, right?
Right, so that's what I was gonna say is it's a little weird because normally when it says unless otherwise voted, it, what it really means is. The council president makes decisions, but she can be overruled by a vote of the council. So. You know, to have an orderly meeting, she's supposed to figure stuff out and do stuff and make decisions. But if the council says we don't agree with whatever it is, you can take a vote and.
I could have said. I don't, I want to hear what John is saying. And I would make.
Well, you would say, like we read at the beginning. Does the stand is the judge of the council?
Okay.
And then.
So that's what that's.
And that was, right, and that was reflected earlier on, um, I forget where.
But like you could strike that and just. My only issue with this is that. No one is timing.
Right.
I, I, I like. But as long as everybody's got to obey the rule. Because, you know, I, I just don't like situations where. You have three minutes to rock. You know, you're twenty-two minutes.
That's a good question because if no one's timing, then we don't really know what end was.
But I also think it serves purpose.
Yes.
Because if someone is, is.
You want to stay on point.
Right, and if it's, yeah, there's also, you know, there has to be a mechanism for when people are eyeing. And sometimes I know it can be hard for. Us to want to cut one another off if you're just tired, and if you feel a little clutchy, then you could make a number of different points of order. Based on that. But, you know. It's better to have a tool than to not have it. Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
And. It's not, for instance, my intention to time it. But as I said. You know, part of, I think, this process and all general conversations, how do we? How do we continue to make these meetings efficient? Every, trying to stay, this is on topic. I don't know, that's my feeling, I think.
No, I agree with you.
So, I mean, we could strike unless otherwise voted by the council because it stands to reason that it's a point of order and that would fall under Mason's anyway, so.
Yeah, it's like you're repeating the rules.
Right, but it's a border is really. You know, the president rules on the procedural question and then the council. I think it's, it's. I guess the question for me is, is it because the council disagrees with her ruling? Or because the council wants a different outcome? And to me, they're not the same thing.
So maybe it stands. You're the lawyer after all. But I think that, I mean, this.
I mean, I've never seen this actually come into play in the life that I've been here.
These sorts of rules, I think.
Well, I don't understand the last sentence.
Yeah, I, I don't.
I have no idea what that means. Because in theory, they're supposed to provide a committee report at the end of each year to the town manager. Never seen it. They did back in like twenty, what was it, like twenty twenty-two or something?
It was before that.
Yeah. That would even be more stuff to put on the agenda, but I mean, I still have these committee reports. Well, but they don't have to be, we don't have to go over them on the agenda, but it would be nice to have them, access them. If you wanted to read about a committee or understand what they've been doing for the last year because you're a citizen, you want.
Well, and then it also comes back to the council liaisons too, and to an extent. Should they be coming back and saying, here's what's going on in the.
It depends on the presiding town council president, to be honest with you. We did have one town council considered that went alphabetically through all forty-three boards committees and commissions. And the liaisons that were assigned to those committee did an actual report. On the front of the agenda where it says committee.
Right.
Commission reports. The liaison was asked at that point. And she did two or three each town council meeting to get through all, all of them. But that's what that section was designated for was the reports of liaison from the committees that they attended.
And that makes more sense than announcing the pancake breakfast. That was, um, more of the town's business.
Yeah.
Talk about that.
That was.
That's what we tend to get.
That was Councilor Rock Grissette who did that. She went through A all the way to the Z.
You want, you want longer agendas, you just got one. I, I don't know, I think we gotta focus on the town's business and what people want to know. I mean. We could, you know, the town isn't doing the pancake breakfast.
Yeah, I know, but I.
But that's what.
As much a fan as I am not of the announcements. You are elected officials, you have constituents, it's a very normal thing, I think. For elected officials to maybe talk about those kinds of things at the local level. Because. It's a difficult for elected folks. So. While I'm, I would be happy for the rest of my life not hearing about pancake breakfast.
Most of the committee reports to Karen are submitted to the community service director because that's what makes up the town report.
Right.
So they are submitted in writing to the, to Lynn Boyant.
So maybe we need to just give some thought to how this whole order, um. Maybe, maybe this is a good breaking point. I am too. Yeah, I'm not a one person. But I try to discourage humans from talking to me. I, I'm not saying of that lately, but I'm the ninth person. All right, this is where we left off. We left, left off at six B.
But I think this is important. I think that. I think that, you know. It's just a matter of figuring out what's. You're making, we'll make it more, less confusing, more plain speaking. And. More, allow it to be more directed.
Yeah.
I don't know what I mean.
Yeah. And I think you want to, you want to maintain flexibility where it makes sense to do that. Um, so you don't want to have like rules, rules, rules that like, oh my God, there's a whole ton of the rules to let you guys do your jobs effectively.
Moving.
Anywhere Karen, this document says administrative assistant, they're. Just administrators, just nature.
Okay, yeah, so I'll, I'll take, I'll take the title.
Okay, I am. The chair is. No, I think we picked a good breaking point both will. We have our needs meetings. It's up to all of you. We have to approve the minutes first?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we are moving to, uh, topic D. Approve the meeting minutes of June fourth, twenty twenty-four. Second, okay, we have a movement second. We want a vote. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, now we're at the next meeting. Do we want to do a couple of these? Our deadline is, continues to be October, is that?
I was gonna ask you, I couldn't remember.
Because we still, I want to do due diligence to these other ones.
Yeah.
I think once we get ourselves, I think it's very wise to compare.
October thirty-first is your deadline, twenty twenty-four.
How about mid-July?
The meetings July eighteen, the town council meetings July.
How about the Tuesday of. Father to that, the sixteenth. Is that good for people?
My schedule is so bizarre that I just try to. But you guys pick a day.
Let me just grab the calendar that I have.
Maybe either the week before, the week, the week of a council meeting is.
All right, the week before.
The night?
Is that gonna give people, all we have is like the Fourth of July. Do people feel like they need to?
Ask a question, if, um, I can't be here in person, can I come on Zoom?
Though to your question. We have not been doing split meetings like that except for the council and you guys adopted a rule to govern that. And part of the reason for that was the town staff that was needed to, I guess. To, to do all that, Lynn can speak to that. We have not been doing that.
Weren't we?
No.
Uh-oh, no one told me that. But see, that's, that's publicized anyway, certainly.
Yeah, but anybody could come on a Zoom, on this Zoom like and come into the meeting. Yeah, no, I'm just saying, that's how, it's how.
Lynn has to be part of this conversation. Well, my understanding was that we were only allowing the counselors to participate remotely for in-person meetings for council meetings. And there are reasons.
What we don't want to do with the week of a council meeting. And I think the bar is too tight with the Fourth of July in there. I don't think it gives enough time.
Yeah, it's a bad week for the chair, but every.
It's, this room is open on the twenty.
Why don't we do the twenty-third?
What time?
What time?
I think this time was good five. Do you want to do it earlier?
You wait, you guys pick this.
Three would be open.
I got my not council week, so.
Twenty-third, five.
I got that part granted.
So the twenty thirty-five.
And we, we'd be realistic that we're gonna get through the rest of this, uh, Karen?
Um, I, I think so. I think, yeah, I think we're all.
And then maybe, I don't know, will you guys be available at that time? To give us an overview of what you've read? Is that putting too much of a burden on you between now and the twenty-third?
For the other towns?
To give us kind of a synopsis of like, wow, this is very different or this is. I, I don't think that we need to wait for them to synopsize the other towns. I think we need to read through the towns and be ready to come with our own. Bridge water was. And also where are those posted? I email, they should be.
You hang on.
But they're not posted anywhere?
No, because they're not ours.
I don't have permission.
Can you send them?
I don't think I've.
Of course you do, because you're the one that said, oh, I already collected some of them.
I collected some of them from the.
But when I sent you the link, it had all of the, it had all of the.
I read a bunch. They're not too disparate.
Allison, I, I honestly took one quick look and went, uh, and then I went back what I was doing. Allison took a look.
I mostly. Liked the formatting of several of them that we could not, uh, including some subcategories. I mean, the subcategories might not be. Totally necessary, but I did make note of certain things that were included and others that may be nice, I mean. For organizational and, and just easy access table contents, be a good idea. Um, a lot of them had a preamble. Uh, which we don't have. And then there's just a few other things that we don't have, like a definition upon, including suspension of the rule. I think that we have anything.
I added some language. Where I basically said, you can suspend the rules, you can suspend ordinance, you follow the same process that you. You promulgate them and you can't suspend the charge.
Then actually, even, I know to incorporate it. So I did this before you sent me this, so I. I don't think there's a lot that.
Okay, so it sounds like there's a lot, there, there may be some formatting improvements, but I do think, I do think. Um, and I'm gonna try and take a look, but I just honestly didn't really do it yet. But you guys should take a look because if something jumps out and you're like, why don't we have that?
Well, let's all start to do that then prior to the next meeting. So we can finish this and then start in with the. I mean, just formatting.
Yeah, I think if they can be organized better, then we should do that.
This format you really like?
Um, just so that. I mean, like ampers, it, it's so long, but it also is so pretty.
I mean, like ampers, it, it's so long, but it also is so pretty. I just think like it's, it went to the eye. Has like a nice cover painting. That is one particular. I have never heard of the title. Did you say on Chronicle last night, the little girl who's gone to every town hall in the state?
Sideways, Kristen, I did get the email you sent out, like, five eighteen twenty-four.
The email you sent at nine.
Picture.
Yeah, you have information to those contents and they're all giant.
For a motion to return.
All those in favor? You are in turn, uh, ooh, six fifty-two.